Take a moment for prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for all the gifts that you've given us. We thank you for this day that you've given us. And we thank you for the family, the friends, and neighbors that you've given us. We ask tonight, as we come together to make decisions for this community, that you bless us with wisdom. In your name, amen.
Please, you want me to say in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not sure exactly where to start or how to start that. Last conference meeting, we talked about quotes on the tasers, radar rotation process, mattresses. I asked Betty about the budget we'll react as far as what monies some of this could come out of and can ship around. She's still, she's going to get back to me. There should be a corrections fund or a jail fund that we can pay the mattresses out of. Still checking on that. Don't know exactly what the monies for that fund is.
Chief, sir, I verified with her just a moment ago, and you are correct. Those can't come directly out of corrections fund.
Okay, if that's the case, then obviously we have the budget for that. Because eight mattresses for the jail, to replace all eight mattresses, will override $480, including shipping to us. The radar units that I'm talking about, some of the vehicles, what we're trying to do is when we get a patrol car, we will put used equipment from the old one into the new. Now, that's catching up to us with not only the radar units, but we also, eventually, we're going to have computers, printers, you know, all of that is eventually, those are going to be oneses and twoses coming up, but no time soon. To speak of right now, there's about four radar units that are not working properly. We've got them all recalibrated. Charles sent them to the company, everything's come back. Some of them that he gets in, the company couldn't fix, so that was wasted. But a quote for four units, the single antenna is $3,732. Again, I'm not sure, I know we can't use corrections out of that. Tasers, we will need to purchase at least two. This is a quote for four, because we'll have three down. We have to hire the new officer, who's going to have to replace that one. The taser company will give us a discount if we decommission X amount of tasers. So obviously, the more tasers we decommission, the more refund, discount, whatever they give us. Right now, we have three, possibly a total of four, that are not working. So we will need to replace those. And that comes out to a total of $3,821.89. That is after the $440 discounts that we're going to give us. And if the discount is just, let's simply tell them now, we have four tasers that are not going to be working anymore. We don't have to send them in, we don't have to send the equipment in, we just have to tell them, we've got four units that's not working. Also, on the quote, see, that is for holsters and the taser probes in that. Cover the mattress, cover that. Also, what I'd like for you guys to talk about is the rank structure for the police department. I would like to separate the sergeant from the investigator. And that is a position that eventually, if I do get to promote somebody later on, I don't want to have too many chiefs and I'm making idiots, so to speak. So by separating that, I have eventually two sergeants and two investigators, is my point. I'd like to, you know, discuss promoting another investigator from internal. Something I've discussed with a few of you guys, Mr. Holmes, who's like there, was open to the discussion of that. Of course, the downside to the investigator, splitting those, it will not create extra monies, but it will create an extra job description. So that being said, I would like for that to be at least equal to the sergeant pay. Then, if I'm going to take that, you guys can slow down.
On the current ranking, rank order or structure, there is a spot currently for the investigator. What's it on the pay scale?
There's not, not on the pay scale that you guys have. It's a combination of a sergeant slash investigator.
What do you say sergeant pay?
I want to say fifteen, I think it's...
It's the same pay, it's just a different packet order.
There's not an actual investigator position. It's a sergeant that's doing investigative work that causes that an investigator. It's never been put in there documented of what it is.
And I would separate that. Because if I promote you as a sergeant, you know, you're an investigator, which one is it? I want separation, you're a sergeant, you're an investigator. And that being said, as far as the pay, you know, obviously, the more I can get, the better for the guys. But I would like for the investigator to make at least equal to what sergeant should make for the investigator. But once you separate that, you'll have to have a pay identifier for the investigator, because there's not a single official number. So that is why I would say you separate that. Also, I'd like to bring up the subject of take on vehicles. I know it's a benefit to some to drive the vehicle home. And after careful consideration, I think some of the limits are too far that they're driving right now. So I would like for you guys to think about setting the policy. Anybody within the police department can have a take on vehicle, as long as they live within five miles of the city limits. That's not complicated jurisdiction or anything like that. If you're within five miles of Ranegill City Limits, you can have a take on car. Anything outside of that, you park your patrol car, you drive up just like every other employee, you get in your patrol car, and do your work. After consideration, I mean, either way, it's a manual.
How many do we have that you're looking at as ad place?
Four. I think that's four, then we'll have to actually park the vehicles and not have to take them. And that's, there were some service scenarios if we hired the other officer. Right now, we have one vehicle for every officer. We'll approve that today. I want to ask for one tonight and send one to the academy due to applications that were received. But when we hire the second one, we're going to have to either swap, or not swap, but share vehicles by use of it, or buy a used one, or something like that. Hey, Councilman Graham said we don't have money in the budget, so we understand, we wish we were paying on the two Dodges. So we have those for two years. Inquired on how other departments get used vehicles. I've gotten some information back, not a lot. It's looking like you're going to spend nine, $12,000 for a used vehicle, you still want to equip that. So you're going to sink...
You're wasting money.
My opinion, yes. You're going to sink $20,000 into a used vehicle, when you can get a new one for 22, well, plus equipment. You don't have to do all that. So, I mean, I don't have numbers to give to you guys, they just haven't came back yet. But as far as the take on cars, unless you gave me the questions, I would go on. Without you, I'd like to hire tonight, with y'all's approval, would be Kevin Smith. He's current officer at Fort Payne. He's put out fishing in. I thought he'd be a very nice guy, very knowledgeable, he's A-10 certified.
I'd be glad to bring that up in emotion. I've talked to several people, too, that's, you know, give me recommendations and stuff. I think very highly of him, so I'd have no problem bringing that up.
I think you'll benefit us very well. And on that note, I'd like to ask you guys if we can hire somebody, send them to the academy due to, we didn't get many applications for, with certified. So if we do send somebody to the academy, it's going to incur a little bit of cost here, just hiring somebody out of the street with certified. But usually, in doing so, they will work for, I'm sorry, two to four years, DC. So they'll do a contract, if you will, and they'll pay, you send me to the academy, I'll work here for two to four years. So at least you have that in people we locked in. I did talk to a few that were open, you know, they have degrees, and they had talked about different agencies paying a little bit more because they have a degree. So, you know, that was from a conversation with the applicants, that's why we didn't have it.
Do we have any type of contractual agreement already drawn out, or we have to get that drawn up?
I'd like to check into that, because I know...
That's an issue we've had before. Just like with other departments, you get them trained, and you pay for it, and then they leave. So if we're going to send someone to do that, I think it needs to be something that we get some financing for somebody else.
And I don't know that from seeing agreements out. But I know Travis Shannon was one that had a four-year contract that we sent to the academy. But we also had another one, and he got out of his contract, like they do, so the agency that picked him up has even three of those for the cost of this. Like grocery, certification, all kinds of things. To me, it's a win-win, if you do six nights.
Can you find that out before next council meeting? We hired him full time tonight, and he let us know something about the situation in crime. He said, I want to get something drawn up, because like I said, there's no sense in financing it for sure.
I think we've already got something drawn up.
I don't know where to start.
Down through the years, we've done that. I think we even started doing it in fire department, too.
Well, I'm about 100% positive that we can make something in place, I just haven't worked yet. In light of that, I would like for consideration to send somebody to the academy. Is that making all terms, if that was the case?
Contract, contract, if you do that.
Oh, sure.
It's also a reflection on our high school sector. If I could get you somewhere else. Then it says in the fact quality and the people that work there. Something else to look at.
On this pay scale right here, effective 9/30/2015, the investigator is listed as a captain.
Okay, well, the other one you got there, previous to that, you had a sergeant. So again, I like a little separation, so I know exactly clearly, I have an investigator, I have a sergeant. That's kind of my thing. And I think the investigator now is working at sergeant pay. So therefore, if you separate positions, the investigator will make it the same thing as a sergeant. It'll also open up, if you promote somebody to ship work, then they can be able to ship. An investigator right now is a monthly driver, so therefore, there's no need to have actually be over shipped.
So you're wanting us to decrease the investigator pay on this case?
What's investigator's like on that question?
Fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, it starts out fifteen, sixteen grand, a sergeant starts out thirteen, fifteen. So that is a dollar and sixty-sixths difference per hour.
Well, I don't know where that would come from. I may have pulled the look back. But my understanding is, my investigator's making sergeant pay, you're correct.
Well, I think what happened is, when we attempted to put our current sergeant, who's working as an investigator, at an investigator level, that's when we made that other section. And that was probably done in 2013 or 2014. I have to go back in the past, but I think that's what happened.
The council voted for that, not the first one.
I just want to simplify. I mean, to me, that would be simple. You have an investigator, then you have a sergeant. You have the investigator, then you have the captain. You have investigators, and that's why, to me, it would be simplified.
I think it's your department. I think that would be one of the parts, being the chief, you're a bit of a...
I definitely go to the department, so...
How does the rank file lack the report, something like that? I mean, is the rank file lack what they're calling that?
Oh, it does, but they have lieutenant's, they have...
I mean, just between the ones where they are, I mean, is it pretty well the same?
They have a lot more, if that makes sense. But yeah, I mean, files are the same. Their investigators are totally second, but they're not, my understanding, they're not worth it. An investigator is a rank, as far as I'm concerned, but when you start slashing, incorporating them all together, you know, if you have, eventually, I'd like to have two investigators and two sergeants to run the ship. Two sergeants will run the ship. But right now, if you're telling me that the investigator is a sergeant or captain, you might have two captains, two sergeants. The sergeant's going way back to the last captain. To me, I'd rather have the investigator, sergeant, and we don't have to fill a captain's squad right now. That's something we need to discuss later on. But as far as the rank structure, very similar to what we have here, we have a lieutenant, captain, it's only a patrol. Your captain is not an investigator. They have shift sergeants, who's also patrol, but their investigator is solely an investigator. Eventually, I would like to see by hiring a second investigator, you have the one working shifts, whereas they rotate with the other guy. So you have an investigator, one of the second, when he feels honored, and that's a double request. It's not 24/7, because they're doing office of shifts, but you have an investigator working a shift, just like the new unit for patrol, you guys. They can fluctuate the way that they operate, if they have a year or something, it's a little late, but still, separate instances, I think. Also, it could be, it could be out of the town, as far as they can cover a ship, to one, one of these, they could be the third person on the ship, pushing on the ship. You know, I might even water it up a little.
That day on the demolition property that we talked about, it was bad. Going around, there's a list of properties that are, about three houses and commercial properties that are around right now. We met with corporate ownership, Carcom, and he encouraged us to put together a list, you know, potential properties. We've already weeded out some, just put these seven street, they wouldn't work. Lab's going to be involved as far as helping put together a cost estimate. And if you guys remember, what we talked about is program that we're going into, you know, if you count on it, $250,000. And the way that works, it works a little bit differently. We've got 20% match, exceeded others. But what they allow you to do is, if we apply for $250,000 grant, 20% of that would be $50,000. What they let us do is tack on the $50,000 to the $250,000. So if we opt to go for the maximum amount, we can actually, we're working by $300,000. How many houses and properties that is, I don't know exactly. But this is where, this is where the list is right now. Now, it says on there that, you know, we don't have all of the property owner approvals. Most of those property owners haven't been contacted. So obviously, if the property owner says, you know, won't participate, then that property is going to offer this. If the property owner won't consent to it, then there's no way for us to put it in.
I've had quite a few people, you know, committed, talking to me about this, saying it's a good idea, you know, if we could get a grant, get some stuff planned up. And they told me to the houses that they, they own, and they want to turn that down.
It's good to have the property owner, because it doesn't involve any money other than they've got a collective structure, then it gets cleaned up, and they end up with a payment of $20,000. If there's properties that people have contacted you about, they're going to put the police app to it, TANB is following this list, street department's working, or... Some of these, I mean, more than likely, you look at 43 properties here, more than likely all of them are going to work together. Some of the property owners might not be going on all this. If you've got people that's contacted, police have them, have them to do this. But that's where we're at. So lab, hopefully, in the coming weeks, we'll estimate, you know, what it's going to take to get a property. Some of the stuff that drives up the costs is title work's got to be completed, got to actually do some surveying to verify the properties, the structures set on the properties that we think are good, just a lot of paperwork to do. Also attached to that, Kelly had sent out a citizen participation plan. That is something we've been talking to Lucas, if you have a cavity to try. That is something that we need to pass to them, and get employees. We very well may have something on this in place. I just wasn't sure, another city, as done cities, we can probably, just wasn't sure if we have this exact plan in place and what requires us to acquire. Once we get the list, narrow it down, the cost estimates, and you have to, then we'll have to pass a resolution for the allocation to match, to everyone's stakes.
I don't think I have the other attachment. The other attachment?
This paper plan? It was sent out, you know. I've got a copy here.
I didn't bring the copy. Okay. I just thought it was going to happen.
Lucas says it's part of standard, standard copy. Also, we've got a series of personnel moves today. Most of them are pretty self-explanatory, but we have overtime dispatch, and John's having to move one of the part-time dispatchers to full-time. And in fire department, we, one of the full-time firefighters has got a job, and a new department is likely to move to the part-time list. And then libraries, the sergeant, the part-time person.
That will create an open position for the department, as our career coordinator expressed any interest in full-time job. How much longer does that recruiting go on?
Four-year retirement was passive, but I don't think that's four years.
This other patrol one, is that the one that you were wanting to send to the academy, not Mr. Smith?
Yes.
The other one was that kind of one?
Yes.
And he's good with us doing this, and he's good with signing, wherever he needs to sign, and then he works here?
He would sign tonight if he could.
Gotcha.
But yeah, he's from here, his dad's from here, so yeah, I think he'll give us more than the required four years. Because I had mentioned that also, that there was a, you've got to give us X amount of years, because I didn't know exactly. But like I just wanted to say, we have done that for the past, I would say at least four that we've seen. If I'm not mistaken, it was four years. So I read, I signed there. I just, I've never seen it, so I couldn't tell you how it's working, but we have it.
I have another question coming. Do you have people that's going to pop them through?
The ones that I, the ones that I knew about, it's not a percent, but I don't feel heard much of those names.
The person that makes two, or at least lab, we're going to get ladder, we'll have to draft, and that's what, put them next to the gear. Some of the stuff we get out, title work we get out, for services.
I just have a couple of things. Had a heat and air unit go bad at the library. And we went ahead, it's under the $15,000 bid, but we went ahead and bid it out between three different companies in Ranegill. And so the CAV refrigeration come in for the lowest bidder. But we just went ahead and done it, you know, just to give everybody a chance at it. So that come in at $4,600, we get off to replace that full-term unit. We've been having trouble with it for a while, heating changes cracking in, and so this is something that has to be studied. So that was a problem. The other thing was, was that code you did. But Thomas had sent me an email talking about it, and so I just, I just put it online to discuss the staffing at the fire department, and to change him from part-time, I mean, full-time to part-time. Now, he's done, is he already done, I mean?
It's this week. So we're going to be on the file.
And so probably, we need to go ahead and post the full-time fire cops position. So we'll do that tonight, before we post that.
I only got one thing that's on the list, and there is not on the list, but it's just something to kind of throw out people's attention. And I don't know if it's where we could take this as some kind of capital improvement or what. Farmers market speaks as a startup, and we've had several complaints and stuff about, there's not even benches, anywhere closed or something. We might be looking at putting in a park where some of them can just sit down and take a break for a little bit. And I got Sammy today, he got some prices on it, and I've got the drone, but I cannot see the price for it. Yeah, the benches are like, the ones like we have down there, you're looking at $580 for the metal benches with like the rubber plates and stuff. And I didn't know if that would be something we might be looking at, maybe add them to the park, but, you know, so I'll take a break. Maybe if you've got little kids or what have you, you know, if you go by the swing safety ring, they're nice like that area, so.
That is, two benches, $580.42. I talked to someone, ladies, and he got them to give us a price plus 10%. That's half what they would cost for top two.
That's the price for two of them, is that the price?
Five eighty, forty-two, price for two benches, six-foot benches.
Okay, that means what do we need? I'd like to get this both. So if we got six, it'd be $1,500.
Is that affordable, concrete's near, or is that affordable?
No, we're going to just put them like it's in the ground, where you can use it.
It's about the same price. If you want portable, if you want portable benches, they're plus the same price. I just got the price on fire, I don't want to put it there.
The only problem really with the portable, if something's not going on, there's always something going on, where they're not going to make where they're at, or something like that. that, so I'd rather them be in there. I just want to get y'all's thoughts on that.
Well, I'm going to do four, or, or more, if you need.
Ms. Box is a bad man, she's terrible, we, we've got that process.
They're disgusting.
Yeah, we've got that process going right now.
Embarrassed them.
Yeah.
They are.
Yeah, that's something to put in the dress right now.
We like Kevin Sandin, we like his budget.
Doesn't have much of one left, so. Well, that's, kind of, what everybody thinks, and I'd like to do that, but, four benches. And that's all we have.
The only thing that I have is to make a motion to, um, for this quote to be accepted from FTC, what it is, is it's, um, the fiber optics to connect the leachate with the SCADA system. And that's all I have.
I'm going to ask that we go ahead and officially pass the spring cleanup, uh, spring cleanup, according to Mr. Gobbles, is going to be running from right now, um, all the way to the, uh, last Saturday in March, or May, so it'll be May the twenty-eighth. We've already got the dumpsters out there, there'll be just a few, um, a little bit of overtime associated with some of the workers in sanitation department, uh, where they stay there till six o'clock on weekdays, and while they're there on the weekends.
And this is such a shock.
Yeah, this is the dumpster behind.
So that's why you're a lot of, you know, it's.
As long as you got a valid rental, driver's license, that, that should be good to go.
And we just ask you don't put any used cars or empty pack cans out there.
They pick a car, it's a dumpster, more careful.
I'm not going to tell them, I'm not going to tell them.
Yeah, I know. Anybody pick a car, put a dumpster, they just do what they want to do.
Got to leave your tires off that, we just.
We did, yeah.
Um, I'm going to ask that we empower advanced engineering, uh, to do the upgrades to the SCADA system at the wastewater treatment plant, the SCADA system will be, uh, tying in the, the leachate tanks, as, as well as the new digester, and the new, uh, new four, uh, four hundred K generator to our system, uh, don't have an exact quote on the price, but, um, per the individual at advanced engineering, this will not exceed fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the upgrades, that does include all the new equipment, um, all the termination with the fiber optics ran between the buildings, and, uh, the implication of programming and bringing the system to up to. We have, uh, some outstanding invoices from BH Craig and Lad Environmental, uh, the cumulative amount of these, uh, this is for the upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant, is three hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Um, I'm going to ask that we pay these out of the special account of the general fund, uh, do we want to include the caveat that it's to be repaid by the, uh, instruction loan?
Has it been?
I will include that caveat, uh, some of these invoices are sixty days overdue, uh, BH Craig has been so kind as to not pull their employees, uh, and we have begged and pleaded with them not to, so we want to say thank you for that. Um, I will ask that we, uh, pass an adopt ordinance oh-five-oh-two, twenty-sixteen, uh, we had the reading of this ordinance at the prior council. Once that, uh, ordinance has been passed, I will ask that we authorize the mayor or the clerk to establish a construction escrow account, uh, with, for Southern State Bank as required by the state ordinance. And last thing, uh, I'm going to ask that we change the date of the second council meeting in May, due to municipal conflicts. We all agreed on Thursday?
It's, uh, the nineteenth.
I'm good, that's fine. Yeah, May the nineteenth, Thursday. And that meeting will be held at the, uh, new municipal annex next to the city hall.
The, uh, the pledge ordinance for, for borrowing money, is, you got, it's been a thing, you don't have to borrow the one point nine seven million, you can borrow the short-term money to finish the project. And then you get our money, our money back, or we get invested in this project, we have the financial assistance. So we don't have to, one, we don't need this order, two, we don't have to borrow, we don't have to borrow the one point nine seven million.
This is what USDA requires, the ordinance.
Well, that's, that's, that's just not, that, that's just not what I'm being told.
That's, I mean, John Van Diver with USDA, and David Brinkton, the attorney, that's, I mean, exactly what they're telling me, so I don't, I don't know why we're having.
You have a chance, we can give them a fair. I'm talking to them.
I'm talking with that, I've, I've talked with Lucas, that's just not, that's not the case, I mean, sure, plenty of permanent financing, it would be easier to have all that consolidated, we can do that, we can do consolidate all of it into one loan, a couple of weeks before permanent financing closes. We don't have to borrow it, I understand getting our money back, and I understand we need to, we need to take full advantage of the permanent financing, which is a one point nine seven million dollars, so we can get a full grant, which is like a hundred and thirty dollars, that's, that's, I'm sure, we need to do that, uh, maybe get our money back.
What you're saying is we don't have to do everything.
Do whatever you're taking. That's right, that's right. We can borrow a short-term, six hundred, uh, thousand or so, finish this construction project, and then consolidate that six hundred thousand with the money we got in the project into that temporary loan that they're talking about. I, I've talked with John about this, John Van Diver, and, uh, he says, hey, that's, that's perfectly fine. John's the, the, I don't know if he wrote his official title, of course, he's with USDA, he's in finance, and, uh, but I explained to him the mechanics of what, what we're doing on this side, and he said that perfectly accepted.
Well, either way, we're just borrowing the amount that we need to finish the construction, that's what we're drawing down.
It's essentially, we don't pay, we don't pay more interest.
How so? You're not borrowing the one point nine seven million, you're authorized to borrow up to that, and there's very strict guidelines to how that money can be drawn down in a year, um, in, in this written in for this ordinance.
Okay. So if y'all back to ordinance, y'all going to be fine, right over the bank, and borrow six hundred, six hundred fifty thousand dollars?
You can't, it spells it out in the year.
Okay, that's my point, we don't need that ordinance. Because if we borrow this money short-term, we can reimburse ourselves, I'm not saying we, we, I'm not saying we need to tie our money in this project, we can take full advantage of the loan, the permanent financing, so we can get the, the full grant. There's no need to borrow all this money right now. Essentially, what we're going to do is, if we borrow all the money right now, we're going to replace borrowed money from the general obligation.
How much, how much do we like, having enough to finish up this project?
Six hundred?
Well, uh, three hundred and eighty-five thousand for phase one.
How much?
And then whatever it's going to be in phase two, three hundred and eighty-five thousand for phase one, and then the phase two, six hundred.
But, I mean, if we pay it out of the general fund, special account, this paper, till we get our permanent financing.
Till we get our permanent financing, and we, we refund all the accounts that have been used and paid for this construction fix.
That's right.
But that's, that's what I mean.
You have to pay the interest, there are many things out there, I don't know what you got to add.
You borrow what you got to have, we don't, we're going to be at the money we got tied up in the project, we're going to be at it by, when we close the permanent financing, and the quicker we get the second phase going, and we hit the one point nine seven million dollar mark in construction, then we can close the permanent financing, because the grant funds, eight hundred and thirty, we can finish the project. And that's how, that's how John explained it.
Do you have a problem putting any of that money back in those accounts that we had to take, I mean, we're going to take money out of all our accounts, to try to get that, so is any problem putting that back in?
Problem putting.
Don't have that money back in there.
Permanent financing, when it back in those accounts, I don't know, so, you know, uh, if, if there's a problem, if there's a problem in the maintenance with the, the permanent financing, then two weeks out from closing, uh, then let's, let's sit here at this table and improve a, a temporary loan for two weeks or whatever, at first, uh, reimburse yourself with that local loan, and then go to the closing table and close up this deal.
Now, part of the, uh, money that was earmarked for road resurfacing in this summer has been spent on the invoices to BH Craig, where do we get the money to do any road resurfacing issue?
Where do we get the money? What, what money did we put?
We didn't put any money in the budget, we said we was going to take it straight out of the capital improvement fund, and we earmarked about three hundred thousand dollars of it for road resurfacing. I find y'all can put it out in special accounts, that's, that's not a problem, um, I just don't want us to put us in a position where, um, we don't get the resurfacing of the roads.
Resurface roads.
Yes.
Well, I don't, but, as far as money, I've been on the present table, why?
I think we put like fifty thousand dollars in that, it wasn't very much, because we had that, we had that bun running that was going to use a little bit of it, you know, towards some resurfacing, and that was figured into it when we done it, um, but I'm, I'm good with just, you know, like, getting that money, uh, you know, the amount, and they, or whatever, but get, to keep this, we need to keep this project growing.
Absolutely.
And as soon as that permanent financing comes in, this, you know, this money, they go back in this account.
That's right, we can leave whatever, every time.
It may just be a little later than what we wanted to be.
Well, do we have enough money in the special account right now to do the three hundred and eighty-five thousand plus three hundred thousand for road resurfacing?
I, I don't know the account, I don't know the specific account, but, I know the quicker we get, the quicker we get in phase two, the quicker we get the one point nine seven mark on the project, so we can close permanent financing, this deal, and the grant funds will finish the project.
And, and that's why we went ahead and had the last meeting, and lad, we go ahead and start the bidding, bidding, I heard, I was taking.
And we want to get that finished.
Well, my concern is the road resurfacing, because we've got some roads that die or strays right now, and it's one of those that, if we resurface them this summer, we're probably going to save money in one time, if we have a, a cold winter, a, where it's freezing, lots of moisture, it's going to get in the road bed, and it cracks to the point now where, uh, you get the water in there, it freezes, expands, and it's, the road itself is going to fall apart, and at that point now, you're having to grind the road bed up, and redo it, um, and it, it almost doubles the cost to resurfacing in one time.
All right, so just go ahead and pay it, what we was talking about, that's what we got, and then if it comes to the time that the bun had it come through, look at the short-term, we're going to do that for the road, and then there's not going to be an issue.
So we?
Is there nobody here going to pay that one?
We don't know, we don't know when permanent financing will be, obviously, a lot of factors, weather, and whatnot, but short-term, we can do that, and the day's time, that's, that's quick. So, yeah, do we get to a point where we don't have the money to do the paying projects?
So if we have more than the three and five, and the three hundred, and then are y'all okay with us paying even more works than that?
Nobody's going to grab the road, they're paying.
Well, industrial, a little hard over there, uh, you, you, you know, the business, it's, I mean, yes, it's coming all to pieces, on, not on the Indian quarter, but on the other Indian, there's a lot of trucks, a lot of trucks go up that way, and it's, it's falling, uh, I mean, there's hogs in that bit, and details, just, it's, it's in all places, it's going to be something.
Are, are we okay, we go ahead and have the sound bit out for this, that we brought up the last meeting?
Let's look at the funds and see what's there.
Yeah, let's, let's.
We can pass the next meeting, we'll look for the funds, what's there, and then we'll do it.
I mean, I, I agree, we got, we got this issue right now, uh, that, you know, they have to take the residence for some that, um, can, you know, can allot here, and, and have to do that. We need to do paying this for that, so, not be paying this for the sale, that's right.
And, and see, Marlisle, uh, is one of them that, you know, that's been talked about for years, back when, uh, Donnie was mayor, we talked about it, and we even talked to, uh, Todd about it, and that was one of those roads, kind of like Horton, that the state had paid on some of it, and so, uh, you know, that's the one that's been talked about with Livingston and, and Levede, and Lightning, and, so, so they, they, they were willing to, uh, to kind of look at that, and see if that can come up with some money for it, uh, so.
Paying can't be, uh, so, we need.
Mark, yes.
Maybe, maybe this one will be.
Yeah, and, and, and we got an estimated cost on that, it was only a three hundred five dollars, but, you know, if they're, if they come through with a part of that, then it helps us get a big road paid on it.
That's our part, right?
Totally.
He's talking, he's talking.
No, just, just the city limits part, is pretty much, so, so, so it would be, it would be, uh, probably, kind of, that was, I think.
Six hundred?
No, no, the total was three hundred, our part would be one feet.
Oh, okay.
Now, the barrel up to, to Solana and Badges was more like a hundred and, uh, two hundred thousand, something like that, you know, from that section, so.
And, and the reason it's so high is that, that it's basically ground up.
Some of it is, and there's, there's a few culprits in these, these bits along that before we paid it too, before we did get the new this project, we may have to hire somebody, but whenever there's a problem, it's washed back on the edge of the road, we need to make sure all that's due before we put the gas on, and, so, maybe a little bit of, of, of that, that is, that may be just more, something.
No, that's all I have for now. Good thing, see, we'll go ahead and live into the meeting.
Could I just say something real quick?
Sure.
I wanted to come here and specifically address all the council members about some questions, quite a few actually, that I have, um, about the newspaper articles that say the city in the budget, but I don't want to get into it unless we have all the council members present, I think we're missing one tonight, David Fox is not here, um, is there any way you have of knowing ahead of time when the council member plans to attend, and when they don't attend?
David told me the other day that he would be gone this meeting and probably the next meeting, he's got obligations to have to leave, and, uh, so he, you know, after that, he may be back, and everybody.
Well, I'm going to come back, I mean, this is, but, um, I, I just didn't want to get into it until everybody's here, and I'm trying to talk to everybody personally.
That's fine.
The people, the council members get paid when they don't come to meetings, or that's passed through that, or is there a part of the rules about that, child lines?
There's none, you get paid.
I'm sorry?
There's none, you get paid.
You get paid, so.
You, you get paid.
You still get this meeting and next meeting, and you still get paid?
I think that's, you know, the state law.
No, actually, here, I'm not mistaken, changed there, is where it's. No, actually, Henry, I'm not mistaken, change theirs, whereas it has to attend one of the two, you don't get paid.
That's pretty much the same for other cities?
I have no idea. I just remember they had a problem up there, and they had...
Okay.
And I think it's Henry, don't know if it's you, but I'm thinking it's up there.
How many, or Graham?
Present, Leder.
Yeah.
Freeman here. I'll tell the minutes.
I'll make a motion we accept the minutes as presented, Spencer Reed here.
Motion by Graham, Spencer Reed, the minutes. Second by Leder, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So list personnel items there.
I make a motion we hire Kevin Smith at the starting rate for full-time Coleman. Effective hire date tomorrow, or...
He, he isn't aware, I noticed, but I guess if we did start tomorrow, we could come up, sort his back work, and he could come in and work two, three days, and then watch his hours.
We can pass it for tomorrow, and then whenever he can, he'll be good to go.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
It needs a certified officer, is he not a lone boat to seven, six months?
Does he?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so it would be at the second level, like, the sixth month, right?
Tell me, tell me you got a raise, all right, I mean, good job.
Is it for you?
I said, please.
Motion by Leder, second by Graham, all the favors say aye. Any opposed?
And I'll make a motion to, comment Sabrina Gorman from part-time dispatcher to full-time dispatcher at a rate, I don't know what level we're on, should we have full-time pay? But how long has she been with us, Donnie?
Over a year.
Okay, so she's, she's at the earmark for full-time?
I'll second that motion. Motion by Leder, second by Graham, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any others? Motion carries.
And this other one, how, how do we wanna approach that? The one where we're seeing is a catch.
I say let's wait till we get a contract.
I already don't do it. I know Johnny, he had a few more advocates, he just, he, you know, as he should, he went for Coleman, just didn't have any, he felt comfortable having that certain person, so, thought it'd be a good opportunity to send one to, if we get the contract in the long run, we can move it, so, have it on the...
We, we already hiring, and, and, might get, we have to have a fully contract, but tell me what's on the contract before that.
We still have a 90-day permission here also, so, y'all comfortable doing that? I know, I wanna say for the last at least four, we've had a four, like I said, I don't have the funds, so I can't think that's word, but I know we have, we're signing. I know one stayed before, one to a neighboring agency, and they had to buy it, so they had to reimburse us off, put the calls to my, so I do know we have something in place, and I just don't know what's on.
And in that contract, if you find it, or whatever, that needs to be in there, which you're not, about, if they do leave, you could go to somewhere, say, you know, Solana Biles, Fort Wayne, where, because they have to buy off the contract.
And, and actually, I think, I think this happened twice. We've had two officers that fit in his leg, and the agency that hired him had an emergency.
I think it's probably, you know, amnesty, and if you get that contract, get him to sign it, look at it, and if it follows, I don't think anybody will object to it.
Okay.
Bring him home.
I'll do it.
Excellent. I make, give me the...
Yeah, go, go.
The, Cody, I'll make a motion that we change Cody Kennimer from full-time to part-time firefighter.
I second that motion. Motion by Leder, second by Graham, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And under that right there, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we post a firefighting, firefighter position for two weeks, website, and just a small something in the paper.
I second that motion. Motion by Leder, second by Graham, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And summer employee, Courtney Hill.
Okay, I make a motion that we hire Courtney Hill as a part-time summer worker at the library.
Motion by Leder, second by Freeman, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Got the citizen participation plan for, in the event, but obviously, there's no obligation here other than following the rule set out, because it's federal funds. This is not a, a going forward with grant, that was just a plan, but we need to pass that tonight and put that plan in place in the event that we do proceed applying.
Is that a motion?
He can't make a motion.
He can't make it either.
I'll make a motion from the table.
I'll make a motion for that then. Without ever thinking, it ain't gonna happen, so, basically, you want to read.
I second that.
Motion by Freeman, second by Leder, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Too much of a tongue-twister there.
Got one other thing, and it is a personal matter. As you guys know, I'm, I'm affiliated with, with First State Bank and full-time, and First State Bank is coming to Ransville, they're expanding, and part of the expansion is that we're acquiring First Bank of South here at Ransville, and the city has accounts at First Bank of South, got some loans, got, and deposits. I have thought about this for a few weeks, and have handled this, and so I've sought out, I saw that help from the Attorney General's office, and also the Banking Department, and my company, and they suggested to me that I, that I put you guys on notice. I know you guys know me and know my affiliation with the bank, that they felt that it needed to be made a part of the public meeting, and you guys wanted me to put on notice. I've talked with them about that in this letter, states that attached Attorney General opinions, paying to the relationship when you got an elected official affiliated with the private business that the city did visit here. If you guys feel there's any more due diligence that I need to do on this, I'll be happy to do that. I have not sent this to the Ethics Commission, but I'll be happy to do that and get, get an opinion from them. Ransville's relationship with First Bank of South, you know, go back way back, and I think that it's my hope that it gets to continue, because, you know, Ransville money belongs in, in Ransville, and, you know, for a long time, we always, whatever we're buying, whatever we're, we're doing, we always try to trade in Ransville, and I'm, I'm a big believer in that, so, saying all that, I would like this letter, and of course, the attachment on the bill, you know, made a part of the minutes, and, and you guys, this is just formal notice that, that I'm informing you that of my relationship with, with the bank, so, if you got any other questions or got any other concerns, I'd be happy to...
If the Ethics Commission doesn't say it's a personal gain for you, then...
I haven't talked to them.
Right, I mean, if that's something you feel like you would do, just to double check to make sure that it's not legally a personal gain, blah, blah, blah.
Sure. Sure, yeah. The Banking Department's Superintendent, name of the current one, he was in, he was in a very similar situation, because he used to be the mayor of Leverne, and he was a community banker, and so I talked with him, a pretty lengthy conversation about that, and the letter and formal notifications actually gives out, you know, so, that's all we've got. That is all.
Oh, I think I've uncovered one of those, yeah, the hiring of Cody, or moving Cody. The other thing I had was, like I stated earlier, I had, we had a heating and air unit at the library that had my data, so we got three beds, and the lowest bid come in was DuCav, DuCav refrigeration at 4,658 dollars to replace that four-time unit, so I put that in formal for motion.
I second. Motion by Leder, second by Graham, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's the time that I have.
I'm gonna make a motion that we buy four benches for the park. 1160, Tom.
I second that.
Motion by Freeman, second by Leder, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I think I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion too, that we allow Johnny to buy his mattresses for 488 dollars out of the funds that he needs.
I second that. Take that to have a correctional fund?
Yeah, have a correctional fund.
I second that.
Motion by Freeman, second by Leder, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And you don't know the status of the budget situation, Johnny, for the radar or the taser?
I, I don't, in, in life, it's...
We have no choice but to get a taser, but you want to, but we got a bed for four.
Four, yes, and, and like I said, we got three that's actually not in service, so, right now, I don't know exactly how it's working out, we, we were able to buy a few of, one of the funds that you're all at, my children, and, and, but we've got three taser units that's actually, they don't work, so they're out.
I'm gonna make a motion that we buy four tasers for 3,821 dollars and 89 cents.
I second that motion. Motion by Freeman, second by Graham, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
I make a motion we accept the FTC bid for 654 dollars for the optical fiver at the sewer plant.
I'll second it. Motion by Leder, second by Freeman, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? To expand, and...
I'll make a motion that we pay BH Craig, and I have the outstanding invoices on phase one of the sewer project in the amount of 385,157 dollars and 48 cents out of the special account of the general fund.
I second it.
Motion by Graham, second by Freeman, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we authorize the overtime for the spring cleanup for the sanitation department.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Leder, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we contract out with advanced engineering for upgrades to the skating network at the wastewater treatment plant for an amount not to exceed 14,900 dollars.
I second it.
Motion by Graham, second by Freeman, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion that we pay monthly bills.
Second that.
We can move the meeting.
Oh, okay. I'll do that next.
Motion by Graham, pay the monthly bills as presented, second by Freeman, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I'll make a movement, a motion that we move the next regularly scheduled council meeting to Thursday, May 19th, be held at the Ransville Municipal Annex.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Leder, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second. Motion to adjourn by Freeman, second by Graham, all the favors say aye.
Aye.